All right, AJ, let me know when you're ready. I know you're still getting people.
I am ready when you are.
I am going to call this work session for the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Spitz.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley.
Here.
Stare.
Here.
Woodrow. Pictionary.
President.
And councillor Woodrow is excused for the evening. We have two items. The first item is housing and infrastructure discussion with Jeff and Sandy.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Jeff Pascal here, city engineer, and with me is Sandy Belson, comprehensive planning manager. We're here to discuss housing infrastructure and in essence, the needs of infrastructure to support housing development. If you recall, we discussed this issue previously in the fall, and I think what I'm going to do, since we have two new councillors, since that meeting, is kind of just give some highlights from that last presentation real quickly. We identified some areas where there's residential land for potential development, identified what the infrastructure needs, mainly wastewater would be for those, or to spark those, or for those developments to occur. And then, you know, identified that sometimes that's an impediment to those developments, the cost of that infrastructure, and then coupling that with the cost of onsite developments as well that they're required to do. Then we also went through some different ways that developers can pay for those improvements. Things like self-funding, which includes, they just pay for all of the infrastructure. They may get some SDC credits or things like that for extending infrastructure that'll be used by potentially future or other developers. There is the reimbursement district, which then the developer still pays everything upfront, but a district's established. It allows the city to collect fees and then reimburse the original developer for their costs, or some of their costs. And there are limitations with that. And then the third identified was the local improvement district, which requires getting a budding property owners to join in petition the city. It's still a city-run project. But a lot of that, the timing of developers is not always the same, so that doesn't get utilized very often either. So given where council was asking us to come back, we're here tonight. We've gone into a little more depth. We've, within the material provided, provided a list of the projects that would be necessary for each area. A little bit of analysis on the number of acres associated with that cost, and then kind of put together some criteria that the council can consider and use for the discussion. Other than that, I was pretty much just looking for council to discuss, ask questions of staff. Any additional questions they may have?
You're on mute, Joe.
Oh, sorry. I'm usually pretty good about that. So Jeff, I've got a question for you. Thank you for the information. So when we're talking about the delayed SDC reimbursement and that the reimbursement goes to the original developer. So what if, or how is that triggered? I guess I'm looking for fairness. So you have a developer that buys, let's say if I have a developer that spec buyer, and they get, they go ahead and make the plans and they go ahead and pay for those improvements, the infrastructure, et cetera, get, you know, streets in or whatever, water, et cetera. And then the spec buyer now puts it on the market and puts it on the market based on all those improvements being made and paid for by him. So he's getting, he's getting, he or she, or whatever, that buyer, or that seller is now getting paid for the valuation of that infrastructure. Because it increases the value of that property. And then, oh, four or five months down the road, the new owner then develops that land and we start to issue credits for those SDCs to the original developer spec buyer. And so he's double dipping on those, so to speak, of overvaluation, or I should say, undervaluing or overvaluation of the property, because he's going to get credits back from the city, and the new purchaser is not going to have any advantage of that. And to me, that seems, you know, I don't have a problem. I think we need to do something to stymie and stimulate development at all price points. From very low income to whatever, but, but that, that seems out of balance, and it seems that it would, it would, it would create the, maybe the honest person to become a little dishonest, a little deceitful. Is there, what kind of trigger can be there? Is there one there that would, or at least wording, or some sort of encumbrance on that property, providing a new potential owner, that information, or the new owner getting, because he's paying, he or she's paying full price for that property with the, with the infrastructure in place, is paid for with SDCs, and then them getting the advantage of that by buying that property. You see what I'm saying?
It's. So I think mixing a little of some of everything in there. So we'll start with the reimbursement district. The reimbursement district would, is kind of like LID. It has to be established by council, approved by council. Right. And so what would happen is they, they might get some small SDC credits, but if they're, but we've only had one. So here's, since 2008, when council kind of put in place the ability to do reimbursement districts, we've had one reimbursement district approved by the council since 2008.
Right.
And it only covered, no, no, that was an LID, Local Improvement District. No, it was two properties, kind of in the Hayden Bridge area, and it only covers two properties. So the property owner who did the improvements and another abutting property owner. And, but, you know, I had, so I haven't studied the requirements of the code, but really, it, the area is established by the council, and I don't imagine if we were to establish that, that would require that person who it was established for, developer, whoever, to actually build the improvements on their dime, right? So they would be paying for the improvements out of their pocket, and then they would get reimbursed as additional properties develop. Not that they sell it off, but that, and another, so if we took Jasper, Natron area, and one of the property owners, and they're out clear at the end by brand S, they annex, and they want to, they want to build, but we weren't, we hadn't built the trunk line yet. So they pay to build a mile of trunk line, even though they're at the end of that line. They would get reimbursed for the portion in between as other property owners that utilize that line tie into that line. And one of the reasons, I think, it hasn't been utilized very much is for those big projects, it's still a big out-of-pocket expense for a developer. And, yeah, and it only, in the code, it's for 15 years with an extension up to total of 20 years. So you're really hoping that those other properties develop within that timeframe, if you're that developer, because once it expires, they're out, whatever costs, they're, they're gone. They can't recoup those. And so it's kind of that, you know, gamble on are those other properties ready to go? And so that's why we haven't really seen it utilized. Kind of like why we don't see LIDs utilized for major developments, because it's really hard to get all the property owners on the same page in, moving in the same direction at the same time.
And I guess, you know, I see where your head is at as far as backfill infrastructure to get to the developed property. I get that, but what I'm talking about too is, is properties that are adjacent to infrastructure that, that a person wants to develop, and that there is not that, that concern, or where someone is going to buy in between, but also just buying property and having that ability to have the infrastructure SDCs reimbursed, or is that possible unless, unless there's space between, so that, I guess, there does have to be space.
Yeah, there would have, it doesn't have to be space. Typically, we only give reimbursement, or we only give credits, SDC credits, when they build infrastructure that's not necessarily for their, for their specific project, but they overbuild. Say we need a storm pipe, and maybe their calculation, say for their development, they need 18-inch, but we say, well, looking at future developments, we need a 30-inch pipe, and so they oversize that. So we'll, the city will sometimes participate with our own funds in that project, or offer them SDC credits at that point in time.
And there was some of that experience out on Jasper Road just recently, right?
Yes, there, there've been a couple instances. We, there, those kind of things happen fairly often.
So then all the developers that did, for example, instead of having a, a three-inch app, or actually more in this case, that I probably recall, right, a 12-inch outflow, saying that, okay, we want a 20-inch outflow now in regards to stormwater, et cetera. So now they're faced with that, but then told to that they want a settlement pond, or a cooling pond prior to it going into the stormwater system.
Yeah, so if we had, yeah, if we had them size a pond for a bigger area than just their property, they're required to treat the stormwater from their development. So they're required to do a calculation that shows this is the size of facility, if we're using stormwater as an example, that we need for our development. The city could sit there, we could come in and say, well, this is a really good location for this, and maybe we need it bigger for future developments to take more water, or have expansion areas. And so then, then we would be asking them to overbuild that, or requiring them to overbuild that. And then we would negotiate how that expense gets paid for.
Because that's, because, and that's a great example, because, and that's kind of, kind of my point, where I was kind of doing my little rabbit dance here, was that now when you have an overbuild, and you have a pond, a cooling pond requirement, et cetera, and then it's, then our folks say, hey, we may have a development just across the street here with, with 14 new homes. Let's say it's an acre development, we got 14 homes on her, which meets the requirements, but we want this pond capacity to increase by 50% or even 100%. So now that, that person's property now, when they enlarge that pond, or increase the specs on that pond, their buildable land then shrinks.
Potential. I, I mean, I, it's hard without looking at specific areas and locations in each project, because each project's unique, but there is that potential. Then we're getting into talking about potential regional stormwater facility, which we, I mean, we've done those, but those have usually been city-initiated projects where we go purchase the property.
Okay.
But on some instances, which if I'm recalling the project you're talking about, there was already stormwater that went into the area, and so they had to account, I mean, they couldn't just cut that stormwater off. They had to account for that stormwater plus runoff. And so that, that could have led to the calculations of what was necessary.
Okay. So. Did you have anything else, Joe?
No, I just, I'm actually asking questions so I can educate myself whenever I have the opportunity.
No, perfect. So Jeff, we're, we're only discussing moving this as a concept forward, right? So there's like, so that you guys can look at the reserve funds and sort of figure out how much we may have available to do this.
Yeah, so as you can see, of the six areas, the city, as a city, we're already moving a couple of those projects forward. The Jasper trunk was a clear council decision that we want to open that area up for development, so we're going to build the trunk line with user dollars, and we've seen quite a bit of growth out there in residential properties, more and more, all the time developing, and, and we're seeing, and one of the reasons that led us to come to you on phase three is we had interest from developers out there towards the end. And then the South 28th Street project is simply an economics thing. It wasn't a decision other than we're going to pave the road, and we want to make sure that the sewers in there, so we don't have to dig the road up in the future. So it wasn't that there was an interest or anything like that. It was really just not wanting to destroy the road later when a developer does come in. And so with the questions of looking at trying, how can we incentivize, or how can we encourage residential land development, it was really an exercise in identifying the potential impediments to residential land outside, and, you know, large tracts of land, and what, what holds those properties back from potentially developing, you know, beyond annexation and things like that? So what was the real infrastructure needs?
Yeah, and so you, depending on our direction tonight, we could, we could, when we get to the CIP, trigger, trigger a couple more projects to bring infrastructure, infrastructure of these areas. I have one question about the East Main, the one that you sort of circled there. Is some of that the Thurston Hills natural area? Like, the map's a little bit unclear, but some of that vacant land, right? Like, is that all buildable on there?
Well, I think you see some stuff down closer to Main Street, and then you obviously have the stuff that is north of Main Street that is, is flatter. But, yeah, I, I, I would be, it's, not without doing an analysis, and that's why I identified that that area really would require some more analysis, especially on the wastewater side of things, is because, much like, why, I, I would not recommend to the council that they do phase four of the Jasper trunk, is that cost per, kind of, because it gets steeper, and so you're just not gaining as much density for the cost of the infrastructure. The infrastructure gets a lot more expensive, and so I think it's better to kind of leave it to the developer to propose how they want to service that from the end of the trunk line. I think the East Main is similar to that. There is some stuff where you could extend down Hayden Bridge Road and get some of the areas that are flatter out there and not be up in the Thurston natural, Hills natural area, but there's just a lot more analysis that needs to be done to determine what the right projects are.
Sandy.
Yeah, Mayor Van Gordon, the maps do not show any of the Thurston natural areas as being partially vacant or vacant, or GIS removed the Thurston Hills natural area. So anything that you see that's green or brown is not owned by Willamette.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Does anybody else have other questions, Leonard, and then, then Steve?
Yeah, thanks, Sean. So it looked like one of the green areas in the south side was pretty close to the Jasper trunk. Was that, was one of them the proposed phase four of the Jasper trunk?
Yeah, so we could have actually probably labeled these a little on the map a little better. So, yeah, that's the Jasper Natron area. Without roads on here, that, a lot of that green area would be phase four, and we're in essence, taking the pipe to the edge of the green area. So it's really that determination on how, if and when that area develops, how the developer develops that area.
How, how far east does that area go?
Oh. Great question. I don't really have any landmarks.
Right about where the water ends?
That's very helpful, thank you.
No, I'm serious, it is. It's just, it's probably about 250 feet east of that historical house, the, a large rock structure comes up, rises up to the surface and doesn't allow water to be transported further east. So that's why those homes in there are not included.
So there's a natural barrier there, is what you're saying. Okay. All right, well, I, I will say that if, if our idea was just to encourage development along Jasper Road, then I would say that was a resounding success. Because driving down Jasper, I don't see a single intersection that doesn't have a subdivision attached to it. I mean, I, I've got to say, there's, there's been a lot of housing along there, and we could do a lot worse and continue then. I do have one other question. How, how many acres altogether are in the green areas that are depicted in that map? Do we know?
I just lumped those together. Let me see if I have that information real quick. Seems like we did get that broken out. So let's see, I have amongst all six areas, 291 acres vacant.
291 acres, okay.
Yeah.
Steve.
On to my favorite subject, Glenwood. I brought that up last time, and it's sort of been like, it's not doable, but I've got some words here I want to read. Development Glenwood is stagnant. It's approximately a 640-acre, that's a square mile, it's Springfield's urban growth boundary. Some development is now beginning, but the core residential area, nothing. It's one half mile from downtown Springfield. First bullet point under the comments on Glenwood is, obtaining access to sanitary sewers requires annexation to the city. This is, this is the thing they set up for people in Glenwood. Installation or replacement of a septic system for a single-family house is not an option, and sanitary sewer is within its rated B. The house is required to connect and annex. State law says we can no longer annex properties that are not contiguous. That means that property is even one property back from the city limits, and that one property owner doesn't want to annex, the applicant's lot becomes undeveloped and worthless. The suggestion, the Springfield annexes existing county streets is rejected. The reason awkward is the streets are primarily local, and they're in good shape or anything. I have some other comments here, but Glenwood's like a small village, and maybe an idea for the future. My suggestion has been to annex those streets, then most property owners would be next to the city limits. And future planning for sewers can happen naturally. It will begin the evolution through the Glenwood. The suggestion that Glenwood's streets are in poor condition isn't true. I will touch you about one, by the way, is to take a drive down Glenwood's poor condition street and drive down Melston, then you will hold up poor condition. Forming a small sewer district is an idea. Have some Cedar money, can be loaned, but paid back sometime in the future. And Glenwood is an urban renewal district, and taxes to that district are paid into a fund that is controlled by Cedar and can be used for infrastructure improvement. Exactly what the urban renewal district is supposed to do. In the 1990s, Springfield installed a major trunk sewer from where the new hotels were located, down the middle of Franklin Boulevard, to the roundabout, to the south, to the south end of Glenwood, with a highway crossing the Redwood. None of that was in city limits at that time. Now it is, but it was for another reason. Now there has been no effort to expand that line to any other areas. I've talked about some trivia here, but I want to do that. But, well, I want better trivia. Glenwood Water District provides all the street lighting for all of Glenwood, in and out of the city limits, including Franklin Boulevard, and includes installation maintenance and cost of power. Some lighting has been transferred to the city, such as now down there. But the point is, Glenwood has been quietly supporting Springfield in a small way. It's a huge geographical area, ready to be an asset to our city. We continue to keep policy in place that discourages change and improvements.
Sandy.
Yeah, I think, you know, a lot of, I would agree with much of what councillor Mo said. I think that Glenwood, at least from how Jeff and I are looking at it, is a little bit different than the other categories, in that those are pretty simple to add a project to a capital improvement plan. With Glenwood, I think it's more actually of a planning process with more discussion with the residents, how this is going to impact them, how they want, and perhaps some other policy questions around the streets and how we would finance some of this with the existing residents, to put together a financing plan for them. So it's more complex than adding the project to the CIP. So that's just, you know, we're open to, to your direction on that, but it's a little bit different type of project to take on.
Yep, we haven't even started talking about anything like that. It's never going to go anywhere. It's been going on for years like that. So I'm pushing a bit now.
So I'm seeing head nods. Can somebody help me with what the next steps are? Like, are you guys taking, taking it away and working on it a little bit more?
I think the next step would be, is if councils, I, I guess if there's other criteria or other analysis that, that council would like from staff beyond what we've provided, I think it, it would be, is the council interested, and I guess we'll be having a capital improvement update discussion, would they rather have a more in-depth discussion like that in the, in the CIP discussion, or are they interested today in kind of giving that direction based on the criteria and information provided of saying, yeah, we want to pick one area or one of the projects and, and look at putting that in the CIP and funding that? I, I mean, I was looking back at the information and just, you know, to remind council, and I haven't looked at the numbers in a little bit, but you know, there was, in the wastewater fund, $9.3 million in reserve, and in the stormwater fund, $7.1 million in reserve. So there, there is money to go move a project. It's that balance between an expansion project and then not saving enough for, you know, operations, maintenance, and rehabilitation of other projects. So it's that balance of how much do you go spend for expansion and make sure you're holding back for those inevitable repair projects that we need to get out the door as well?
Yeah, and, and I think evaluating that by price per acre is going to help. And then I had, you know, obviously, I would want to know a whole lot more about what peace helps plans were before, you know, we, we brought in the structure for that property, because I just don't know what they're planning. Corey.
Yeah, this is really a question to help educate myself. I'm new to this conversation. So a lot of this sort of partially vacant and vacant Thurston area in East Springfield. And I'm curious as to how this intersects with some of the other challenges, the, you know, working on the Main Street safety plan, because that's a lot about the sort of traffic flow out that way. And the sort of impending levy rebuild that needs to happen out that way. So I'm wondering if, if, if it's how those intersect in terms of prioritizing areas, if that would put additional stress on those areas if we were to prioritize building out there. And again, it's a way to sort of educate myself about how that all comes together.
Yeah, so, and that was what I was somewhat alluding to. If we, so if we go, much like Jasper Natron, if we extend sewer out there, or actually, let's take Peace Health. So if Peace Health were to, say, they're going to develop the residential land, that would most likely require some off-site planning and analysis for traffic impacts in the area, where we already know we have severe traffic limitations and, and needs for upgrades. And so it would require off-site improvements to other systems. Specifically what those are today, we don't know, and it could be a gradual buildup. You know, you just start seeing things get busier and busier, and then you're like, we're, we're back, we're coming, we need to do a East Springfield traffic study to say, what do we need to do to certain intersections? Study to say, what do we need to do to certain intersections? Or is it Hayden Brit or is it, um, Thurston Road that needs to get upgraded? Is it, you know, wha- what are the upgrades necessary? Those aren't really identified. There are some projects identified in the TSP that when we hit a, a certain. Point, pinch point, those projects are necessary to move forward. You know, one of them out in Jasper Natron is the need for developing the Warehouser Hall Road out to Wallace Creek for circulation and providing secondary collector access. But what is, when's the trigger for that? You know, I don't know. When we'll hit that.
So, and I'm looking back at the council to see, uh, it seems like the, I'm seeing some head nods that yes, we still want to pursue this. Um, that we're going to need some more information. Do you guys want to see it in a separate work session or with the capital, uh, in the CIP? Go ahead, Joe.
I think we need to pursue it. I've definitely had it in the right direction, Jeff and Sandy. And I, I mean, there was, there was a lot of positive energy last time we met and spoke about this. And it's nice to see this kind of boil down to, uh, area specific issues. You know, one area that I was looking at too was, was like the Butte, south of town. Near the park and I s- is that all within the city now? Right? Cause before, or is it missing some houses or residential areas? I don't know how far south that is, but that used to be a county islands out in there. Is that still county?
Yeah. So that, eh, once you get out there, um, it's county, it's in the urban growth boundary. Um, the interesting thing, so that area and one reason that area is, is cheaper. As per acre is all of the infrastructure as far as the, what is put in. So the, um, dry sewer line down South Second Street and the dry pressure line is there. It's just the pump station hasn't been installed to open that area up. Now there's obviously other sewer extensions that would be necessary throughout the area, but just getting the pump station there would then open that area up to developers potentially redeveloping the area and adding sewer to their.
So could that be some project that could be, uh, well, that, that seems like that could be a city slash NWMC cooperative project?
Uh, typically because that would be a strictly a city owned, um, pump station. We would work with MWMC because they maintain and manage all of our pump stations, but it would be strictly a city owned only, you know, only managing city flow. And so we would, i- if, if the council desired or we put that in the CIP, the city would take that project on and getting that constructed. I mean, if you were looking for the lowest hanging fruit, that area kind of is it because a lot of the other infrastructures there, the county just repaved South Second Street. You know, the road is got sidewalks, bike lanes. So that, you know, looking at the collector street and, and that infrastructure. If we were to reach out to the county and say, want to look at jurisdictional transfer and annexation. We're looking at taking on, they would probably, they're not going to say no, and we're looking at taking on decent infrastructure that they've, they've just maintained. Like la- last summer or two summers ago, they just repaved the whole road. Of their portion.
Be great. I, I think, I think maybe we can concentrate. I don't know how the council feels, but. I know that, I know the city pretty well and the properties pretty well. And, and that area definitely stuck out in my head. And I think it's got. Uh, like you mentioned, low hanging fruit and it's got some great developable land there that can be really multiple different price points. There's, it's, it's really, it's really varied in there because you got some, some fairly low income type properties there. That, um, you know, and the density is there. Many also have some that are up towards a hillside a little bit and, and away from the river, but, but still a higher price point potential. So. I think, I think we're to go, okay, pick an area and let's concentrate on it.
Yeah. Well, and I, I like the, and I like the fact, especially since the sort of Jasper Natron projects are already in flight, right? So this gives us a big chunk of land. Um, but I think somebody probably needs to get back with Steve about the question about whether or not we should annex all those roads. Um, I think that's a longer conversation. Anybody else have any?
We, we need to find a solution that is maybe one of them. I don't know if it's the one or not, but what are we going to do with that community? It's just rotting away.
Yes. Yes. Anybody else have any other comments before we, go ahead, Damian?
Quick question. So, I mean, I, I think development is always great, but and, and I honestly, I'm not super familiar with that area. Uh, but I have been in around it. I know that there are residents out there. And so when we talk about development, oftentimes. Uh, people are displaced and I'm curious, is, is that going to happen? If we do develop out there, you know, once again, are we going to focus on the bright and shiny? Are we going to support the local populace? Have we talked to the local populace about how they feel about what they need and what they want to see in that area as well?
I, I don't know if you're directing that to me, but I, I think in my mind, in my mind, I was looking at not necessarily, well, not at all displacement, but basically looking at. You got undeveloped lands out there. And when you look at the right type of development, it's going to improve people's lives around it. As opposed to diminish from it. I think it'd be, uh, it would improve their quality of life and, and improve their ability to expand their neighborhoods. So. I don't, it's not, I totally didn't have anything as far as displacement in my mind at all.
Yeah, it's all vague. According to the map, Damian, it looks like it's all vacant. So, um, Leonard, go ahead. And then we've got to get this wrapped up. We've got another item.
Yeah, I, um, I'll, I'll make it quick. I, um, I share Damian's concern of just, I, I, and I think that. Whether it displaces anyone, it's going to be based in a large, uh, to a large extent on what the nature of the development is. I mean, if it's a, a development that encourages affordable housing, then I think that we have the potential of not displacing anyone. Uh, I think there, there was a major concern with some other, uh, potential developments that we were considering there in Glenwood that. That ultimately got rejected and I think partially for that reason. So you're, you're on, you're on the right track, I think. Thanks.
Okay. Perfect. Do you guys have enough direction?
I do. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sandy.
Yeah, I guess I'd like a little bit more direction in terms of Glenwood, whether, how, how council wants to talk about that or what you would like from staff on it.
I think that one's going to be probably ma- well, why don't, can we r- pull that one off into agenda review? Cause Steve's going to be there and we can talk about it maybe at, at length. Cause I think it's going to require a couple of different conversations.
That's fine. I, at, at this point, I'm not really sure what to do. So, um, if you can, uh, talk about it further and get back to us, that would be great.
Yeah, that, that would be perfect. Cause I think Steve, you're going to have to help with that one. Cause you, you know, with it being your award and. It's going to have to, you're going to have to work, walk people through it.
Sandy, many ideas.
Okay. Um, perfect. Uh, Sandy, it looks like you've got the next item.
I do.
Thank you.
So as our comprehensive planning manager, I am trying to keep you informed as to what, uh, my staff and I are working on to make sure we're in sync with how you're wanting us to spend our, uh, time and effort. So I put into your packet, uh, a summary of the various projects that we have underway or those that we know that we'll be starting on soon. Uh, and then there's a spreadsheet table, which is ordered in a different way than in the memo, but it's ordered in the way that those projects are happening now and will finish up and then moving out more to the future. So it's to give you a, a general sense. Um, and I think tying into a little bit about, um, Council Mo's comment is. You know, if there, if there is going to be a major planning effort in Glenwood that will take time and staff is probably going to be part of my staff anyway, as well as others. And so, um, we need to keep them in the context of the other work that we have. What's the priority? How can we balance out the various efforts? So I don't have a whole lot more to say, but I'm available to certainly answer questions. Um, I will just highlight the overall trend that I'm seeing from the state over the past few years as they're providing more and more. Requirements for us to do. And so I'm anticipating that not a, um, that we'll be getting more out of the rulemaking for the climate friendly equitable communities. There's also legislation around climate. That is going to require DLCV, Department of Land Conservation and Development to develop a climate. A new statewide planning goal on climate change that will then require cities to do. Um, work to come into compliance with that. And then there's other some smaller legislation. So we're having a trend where that state is really pushing on cities to respond to their. Either legislation or rulemaking. Um, so it's limiting our options. If we wanting to stay in compliance in terms of what projects we take on. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that. And yes.
So I'm a, I'm a, just assuming by the, the way you're saying it, but there's, there's no funding or resources that's coming with this legislation, right? It's like do the things, but no money, right?
I can't say that completely true, but there, there, in some cases, there is money going to the Department of Land Conservation and Development that will be available for technical assistance grants. But there will not be enough to do all this work for all the communities and there's no guarantee you get it. So while there is some funding being provided at the state level. Not enough to really pay for all of this as a, on a guaranteed basis, because the legislature can only commit for their biennium. They can't commit future legislation or legislatures to provide money for the ongoing implementation.
So, so Corey, this might be a good place for everybody to kind of head nod. I think our position for everybody that's been on the legislative committee at this point is to be if the state's going to require us to do something, they should provide funds for us to do it. And that's the message we've been taking to Salem.
Yes. Plus we're, we're maybe going to see this big federal infrastructure thing, right? And surely we're going to get millions of dollars to do all the things on that.
Go ahead, Joe.
I just could reiterate that if, as far as I'm concerned, they can come up with a thousand different things that we should do. And unless they pay us to do it, then I can think of a thousand reasons why we shouldn't. I mean, I'm sorry, it may be great ideas, but you know, and everybody likes great ideas, but by golly, they really like to bring out problems too. But do you think they have any solutions to the problems they point out? And I don't care what you're talking about. So this is another same, another thing we're talking about, depending legislation and, you know, the comprehensive map, the middle, middle housing and clear and objective standards, et cetera. You have all these different things that are, we're trying to anticipate. How we are going to do that. But I, I kind of look at it as, okay, well, I'm not going to anticipate how to make a truck payment until I buy the truck. So there's no reason to, there's no reason in my mind to sit there and spend a lot of energy and a lot of staff time on things that we may think are coming down the pike. And they may be, but if they're not going to, if they're not going to pay for that, just like with, with Corey was saying, if they're not going to pay our staff timer to the city for that. Um, that's an unfunded mandate and I am completely opposed to it. And I don't care what the idea is. There's my, there's my two cents. Thank you.
So Sandy, the, the question that I had reading through this is you've got. How, you've got only a handful of staff here, right? You've got a, a ton of projects. How far over capacity are we? I couldn't really tell by looking at this is like, are we, do you have capacity to do all of them? Do you like, are you over capacity? Like what's the actual, what's the actual need there?
So we are not getting to the refinement plans and the comprehensive plan map. As I had hoped we would be, um, by now. So that's the projects that are suffering in terms of they're not getting our attention. The rest of the, um, projects listed, we are handling. The, I will talk about Gateway a little bit. Um, we are scoping. So to speak, what the issues there at the Gateway Beltline intersection and the broader Gateway transportation context. So that we can have a better understanding of what will need to be done from a planning perspective there to address the couplet project that we don't think is the best solution because it takes out so many businesses and that is the adopted approach in our plan. Um, the, up there at Cruz and Hutton to have another connection there. Parallel to Gateway. So staff is not supportive of that project that is in our plan. And so we find, want to find a different solution. Um, so that's a major undertaking that we don't have resources for now beyond the scoping part of it.
All right. Thank you. Um, anybody else with questions or comments? Okay. Um, so Sandy, I know folks are working pretty hard on this. Uh, my, my take especially on, on, in situations like this is. I'd rather get, you know, not work 10 things at 10% of the time, but I would rather make sure, you know, even if we have to wait on a project, right? You just described a couple that we wanted to prior, you know, that got down prioritized. I'd rather focus to try to get things to the finish line opposed to really dragging out everything in, in the entire world. Um, recognizing that there's a lot of projects and there's a lot of changes at the state level right now. And I think we should continue to, you know, s- send that legislature the message that like, we're barely keeping our, keeping up with the requirements from the last session. They don't, they don't necessarily have to help so quickly. They can spread it out over time. Go ahead, Leonard.
Thanks. I, um, I, I agree with you, Mayor Van Gordon. I feel like we. Uh, you know, one of the reasons that I was asking about how many acres we've got available right now is that it looks to me like we've got a lot of land to work with as it is. And I, one of the things I was a little bit concerned about when I was going through the packet was the idea of building out infrastructure with the idea of, uh, speculatively, uh, encouraging to, uh, development down the road. I, I, it seems to me that we've got a lot of land that already has access to water and electric without, um, without the na- the, the need to preemptively, um, build out any further. I'd like to concentrate on getting things built now.
All right. Anybody else? Sandy, is there something else you want to call out for us that you would like us to kind of dive into a little bit more? Or do you have kind of enough feedback? I know this was an ask that we brought, that we asked you to come back after probably the last fall, if my memory serves. Um, correctly to kind of give us an update about this.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, it's good to hear your perspectives. Um, and. It'll help us as we continue to prioritize our work and decide what grant funding we should try for in order to, you know, if there's money available to be taken on, if it's a stretch or not. So that hearing your thoughts is helpful. Um, and if we come to any major decision points, I'll, I'll make sure and meet back with you.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, I know there, everything on this list is important, right? Like you've got Gateway, we, you know, we're just barely touching now all the way down to the parcel level map. So like we got, there's a lot of work here. All right. Perfect. Um, looks like we've got 15 minutes before the regular session. So, um, leave this, we're staying here. Um, and then if you guys want to take a 15 minute break and then be back here at seven o'clock. Thank you so much. We are adjourned. Looks like we're still wait, waiting on a couple of people. Okay, I'm going to text Fish.
Why are you going to do that?
You just have to say your name three times, I guess.
It's, it's seven o'clock now, right? Let's do it.
AJ, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to call the Springfield City Council regular session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow. And Counselor Pictionary.
Present.
And Counselor Woodrow is excused for this meeting. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask the members of the audience who are joining us online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called upon to provide public testimony. There are two times this evening designated for public testimony and they are listed as public hearings and business from the audience on the agenda. If you are joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak during that time, please use the raise your hand option to be called upon to provide comment when the designated time is announced. When we will call, when we will call on you, please state your name and ward or general location for the record. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone who has raised their hand, anyone who has submitted email in advance, if there's remaining time, Neil will read emails. First item, please.
Mayor, your first item is Springfield upbeat. Item number one, mayor's recognition, National Library Week proclamation. And Mayor, this is your item.
Oh, fantastic. I love getting to proclaim things. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, often the heart of their cities, towns, schools and academic campuses. Whereas libraries which promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all and work to create an equitable society by providing access to accurate information are cornerstone to democracy. Whereas libraries are a resource for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status by offering services and educational programming that transform lives and strengthen communities. Whereas we recognize librarians as information professionals who develop collections and programs that are wide ranging and explore the diversity of our society and who provide expertise and services and guidance for patrons to access credible sources and materials, making their own informed decisions about the world today. And whereas in a time of changes and challenges for individuals, communities and institutions adapting to COVID-19 emergency measures, libraries are leveraging technology to provide those they serve with digital resources and virtual activities to meet their educational and recreational needs, even while physical locations are partially closed. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sean Van Gordon, proclaim April 4th through the 10th, 2021, National Library Week. It's, and it looks like there's a ton of extra programming at the library. So please go and check it out. Next item, please.
Next item is the consent count.
Can't see anybody. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Neil, will you call the roll?
Counselor Pitts.
Sorry, I had to step away. Did I hear my name?
You're calling, they're calling the vote for the consent calendar.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow. And Counselor Pictionary.
Hi.
Five eyes, zero nays and one absent. The motion passes. Next item, please.
Area of one public hearing tonight, public hearing number one, annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex 0.31 acres of residential property located southeast of the Horace Street and Filbert Lane intersection. Map 18 dash 02 dash 05 dash 23, tax lot 202. This is ordinance number one and ordinance annexing certain territory. Map 18 dash 02 dash 05 dash 23, tax lot 202 to the city of Springfield and Willamalane Park and Recreation District, withdrawing the same territory from the Willackensie Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a separability clause and providing an effective date. This is the first reading and Melissa Corrino is here for the staff report.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Counselor Pictionary, I saw your hand up. Did you want to say something before I started?
Actually go get, give us your spiel and then if you may answer my question and if not, I'll, I'll raise my hand again.
Okay, sounds good. Just out of curiosity, Amy, AJ, can I just share my screen for the PowerPoint?
Yes, you should have a share option on there.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Okay, now I can't see anything. Sorry, folks. All right. Let me get started here. So good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. As Neil had stated, the city council is requested to, to consider an ordinance to annex a 0.31 acre parcel not yet municipally addressed on Horace Street in Springfield. It is located on the south side of Horace Street, just south of Mount Vernon Elementary School. The property owner has requested annexation to facilitate residential development on this property, which is zoned medium density residential. Here's a picture of the current zoning. You can see where the city limits and the, and the fact that everything that's not in city limits, it has an urban, urbanizable fringe overlay. And again, surrounding areas is zoned medium density residential. If the city council approves this annexation, this is how the zoning will change. No other zoning changes except for the city limits, boundaries relocated as well as the removal of, of the urbanizable fringe overlay. Now there are four criteria for annexations from the Springfield Development Code, section 5.7 dash 140. Criteria one, the affected territory proposed to be annexed is within the city's UGB and is contiguous to the city limits. And criteria two, the proposed, the proposed annexation is consistent with applicable policies in the metro plan and other plans. So just dealing with criteria one, if I go back here, the subject site is contiguous with, with city limits to the north and to the east. Actually, the city council did approve an annexation of the properties to the east of the site as well as the Horace Street right away in 2019. Policies from both the city's metro plan and the 2030 refinement plans urbanization element are met through this application. The subject territory is within the UGB again and is currently covered by the urbanizable fringe overlay. With annexation, the parcel will be removed from special districts such as the urbanizable fringe and service areas like the Willackensie Springfield Rural Protection District and would be included in urban services such as sanitary sewer, sub-electric and water, emergency services and Willamalane Recreation. An annexation agreement was also approved and signed by the applicant. And if the annexation is approved, the agreement is ready to be executed by the city and recorded with Lane County. I included the annexation agreement as exhibit B in attachment two. The next two criteria, sorry, hold on, here we go. The next two criteria are listed on the screen here. So if annexation is approved, the tax lot can obtain key facilities and services from either Horace Street or Filbert Lane, just north and northwest of the subject site. Again, these facilities will include sanitary sewer, sub-water and electric, fire protection services from Eugene Springfield Fire Department, police services from Springfield Police and the Willamalane Recreation District. And then the last criteria where applicable fiscal impacts to the city have been mitigated through an annexation agreement. As mentioned earlier, a signed annexation agreement is ready for recording with Lane County upon approval. The agreement covers obligations for the applicant and for the city, including any financial responsibilities. Because all four applicable annexation criteria have been met and annexation will help facilitate full street improvements in this neighborhood and bring this specific property into city limits, staff recommends the council approve this annexation. That's it on my end. I'm here for any questions you may have. And the applicant is also on call if needed.
Counselor Pictionary.
Thank you. So I got a couple of questions. So was that a ridge? I, I realize that was in county, but was the land designation, LDR, was, or was there land, any land designation? I assume there would be. Was it LDR and they now want to MDR?
No, it was designated MDR as well.
Okay.
And zoned MDR.
Oh, cool. Okay. And so the property directly to the south, is this owned by the petitioner?
No, not that I know of.
So I'm concerned.
That's a private.
Okay, so I think geographically, or I should say topographically speaking, I think the stormwater flow goes south through there. And I'm wondering, I may be wrong, but I think it's go south and pretty sure. And so because they don't own the property to the south, I am wondering is what the people to the south, how they feel about potentially having their property disrupted in, in regards to that runoff? Or do they plan to interrupt or involve the two properties to the southwest of them?
So all stormwater mitigation would actually happen on site on that specific property. It would not be directed to the south. Are you meaning the properties that are already annexed to the east, the southeast?
The south, no, no, I'm talking about southwest.
Okay. Okay, those two properties down there.
Yeah.
Again, the stormwater would be treated on site. Engineers and the applicant have already discussed this.
So if that's 0.31 acres and they have to mitigate stormwater so that that basically means another pond, right?
Possibly. There has been some talk that the, the development might expand to those other properties that were annexed in 2019 to give a little bit more space.
Is it the same, the same investors involved, I assume?
Um, if they do purchase the properties to the east, then yes.
Okay. So and then the very last point is that it's my understanding that there's been some changing in regards to affected property contact and affected property questioning or questionnaires and their opinions on that. And those have been done away with as far as door knocking is concerned because of the instituted COVID-19 precautions. And so, and I don't see anywhere on this application what the neighbors think about this. And I would like to see personally, before it goes any further, and I realize it's the first reading, but let's get, let's get it all taken care of prior to the second reading or before we find bumps in the road, down, down the road, is that the adjacent properties, we, I think, while we're doing these COVID-19 precautions and basically doing kind of an end around to what the adjacent property owners' opinions are, that maybe that those folks should be mailed questionnaires to provide them the opportunity to respond back. And so that's documented and we know what they, where they're at with it. Just so we don't have people popping up the last minute and then wasting a bunch of staff time and having to kind of regurgitate stuff.
I hear you. So public notice was sent out and mailed out to all the property owners and residents within 300 feet of this property and I received no comments from the public. So I don't know if you're asking for further outreach.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is that, you know, and I, I get the notices too, et cetera, based on different properties that, that I got my hands on, but it's, but the way they're written, it's like saying, okay, well, hey, you can come do a public comment if you have a problem with this. But it's not really inviting in regards to, we really want to hear from you and we're not making a contact due to COVID, et cetera. I don't, unless you put that on there, I, I think people are just kind of throwing them away. And I'm, I just seems like the, the owners next to these lands that are changing before the very eyes that they really, we really need to jump up ahead of things and get ahold of these folks and say, hey, we really want to hear from you and we don't want to hear from you after the fact. That's happened so many times.
Right.
So I don't know, maybe some ideas you may come across because we, we changed our process. We, we're no longer doing door knocking. But yet we didn't, we haven't, if I recall, have not changed those form letters that we send out.
I'm not sure if the city attorneys are on, but my understanding is the affected property owners to fill out the annexation forms were just the actual property owners of that property, not the adjacent. I think when we're talking about vacating a right of way or.
Yeah, I may be confused of that. You're right.
Yeah, that, that would be, yeah, that would require affected.
Vacation properties, you're right. Okay, I'm done. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Leonard?
Is there, is there a reason that council decided to stop having people door knock in the vicinity of an affected area? I, I don't remember when that happened.
I think since this is, I think referring more to the initiation of, to vacate the right of way on the next application. It was actually the applicant who stated concerns about going door knocking and actually breaking the governor's rules when we were asking them to get all the affected properties consent.
Oh, I see. So it was pandemic related. I see. Okay.
Yes.
That, that's all I got. Thanks.
No worries.
And Leonard, it sounds like it's a different process, right? So once for one application and I don't think we've ever door knocked for annexations.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
All right, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. AJ or Neil, do you have any cards?
Mayor, we have 37 attendees this evening. It looks like we may have one hand raised for this particular item. Let's see here, or maybe two. Again, this is for the public hearing. And sorry, the hands are moving, so just give me just a moment. Okay, it appears we have one speaker, SJ Lore on this particular topic. And SJ, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hear me?
We can.
Perfect. So this has nothing to do with the topic at hand. Is that appropriate still, or would you like me to wait?
Well, I would like you to wait if it's not related to this public hearing.
Perfect. I will wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Mayor, it appears we have no speakers for this particular item.
Very good. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. And this is the first reading, so no action tonight. Any other comments before we move on? All right, perfect. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is business from the audience. And so we'll give folks a moment to put their hands up. Okay, Mayor, your first speaker, if you're ready, is Ben Christensen. And Ben, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Ben.
All right. With the second record lawsuit from the Springfield Police, it's clear that there's a fundamental failure for the city council to understand the role they play in the harm that the police cause. In order to be seen by a court, you have to be able to point to a specific instance and say this caused a measurable harm. By the time the dam, by that time, the damage is already done and there's nothing that the court can do to undo that harm. And this assumes that you can find a lawyer that will take your case. In order to file a complaint against the police, you have to do it with another police officer. For many people in the BIPOC, LGBTQ and disability community, police are viewed as people you should fear. This creates a system of privilege to file a complaint or receive any other form of justice. Where I'm from, we call this putting the coyote in charge of the chicken house, a completely inaccurate analogy to describe the situation because it assumes that all the chickens are being treated equally. And despite this, I chose to use it anyway. Here's why. There are two major flaws. One, in the analogy, the coyote is not a government employee that is sworn to protect and serve a diverse population of people. And the second, the coyote is not killing, incarcerating and brutalizing some groups over others. In order to fix the analogy, the coyote needs to target the black and brown chickens disproportionately, as well as any with injuries or those that don't fit the binary requirements of society, while simultaneously making a space that is only safe for the white chickens with perfect feathers that conform to all of society's expectations. Only then does the analogy convey the damages done by the city council's failure to protect and serve the most vulnerable people in their city. This suspension of Chief Lewis will do next to nothing to address the issues of police brutality as many of the officers that have been involved in the most egregious actions that have caused lawsuit after lawsuit still hold a badge and a gun. The only way fundamental change will happen is if there's an investigation from a third party that's not affiliated with the police. And if that person has the authority to hold the officers accountable, not set recommendations or suggestions like we call the illusion of change that we've seen in the past. The people of Springfield deserve a real investigation with real accountability up to and including legal consequences. I'm also calling for a full investigation into the Springfield Police into any ties to white supremacy or other racist organizations as those were the allegations made by the CLDC in the recent filing. It was clear there was collaboration between the, between the groups. Till then, there will be no justice. And until there is justice, there will be no peace. I yield back the rest of my time.
Mayor, your next speaker is Raylene Lineman, followed by Amy Cuthron. And Raylene, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
You can.
I am here as a member of the library advisory board to represent the library. And as Mayor Van Gordon mentioned and proclaimed at the beginning of the meeting, this is National Library Week with the theme of Welcome to Your Library. Libraries have managed to welcome people in spite of the pandemic closing their doors. As they prepare to open back up safely, they continue to provide curbside pickup, computer appointments, digital cards, and telephone reference services. They hope to have browsing appointments by the end of this month where patrons can come in for a limited time and quickly browse the shelves, pick up holds, and even use self-checkout. This week also kicks off a new service at our library, and that's remote printing. It will be a soft opening this week to make sure that the staff is familiar with how it all works before it is marketed and really promoted the following week. It will allow people to order print jobs directly from their home computers or wireless devices without needing to be on a library computer. They just need to get, have an email to get a retrieval code. And then they can pick up their documents during curbside appointment times. Each visit, the first 10 pages of black and white printing is free and additional pages are 15 cents each. Color they can do, but it's 25 cents a page. They also had a successful spring break program. This year's program centered on STEM education with free family activities featuring dinosaurs kits provided by the Museum of Natural and Cultural History. They also gave away nonfiction books that were sponsored by SUB to spark kids' interest in science and history. The library's efforts to provoke STEM learning in our community was even featured in a KEZI news story on Monday, March 15. The library has put, posted 197 videos to YouTube and currently has 223 subscribers. So that's another way they're reaching out to the community. And Dia de los Niños is annually one of the biggest programs at the library. This year it will be in a virtual format, but it will happen the last week of April. As you can see, our library is welcoming people to the library in many ways as we celebrate this National Library Week. Thanks.
Mayor, our next speaker is Amy Cuthron, followed by Zia Wang. And Amy, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This is Amy Cuthron, formerly of Ward Five, recent mover outer. First, I do want to say I am happy to hear all of the remarks about the library tonight. Springfield Public Library is awesome. And something that really did strike me was Mayor Van Gordon's proclamation. How much he spoke about how they were inclusive, how much they worked for the community, how much they helped people. And, you know, that's great. That's exactly what government should be doing. You know where this is going. The contrast of this is SPD. SPD, how many lawsuits do we have against us right now? Three or four? Record ones at that? It's not the fault of Chief Lewis. Chief Lewis is a symptom. He is not the cause. Without broad sweeping change, you're going to be back here in another few years doing the exact same thing, having the same discussions, talking about the quote unquote same good high performers who just have more interactions, who just happened to get sued because they have more interactions. And we all know that's bunk. We all know that there is a problem. The only way to fix this is not going to be bringing in some outside hire. It's not going to be bringing someone from within to be the new chief. It's not going to be firing Chief Lewis. The only way to fix SPD is to start from ground zero and build. Anything less will lead us back to where we are right now. I seed the rest of my time.
Our next speaker is Zia Wang, followed by Holly Shaper. Zia, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi. Good evening. I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. I'm glad to see Springfield City Council showing more openness, openness to listen. And the counselor, Marley Wujo, spoke up about the intolerance of racism issue regarding my situation last meeting. However, SPD used a lot of my reading time in the past two weeks. The assessment of independent investigation into SPD misconduct have proven that they are incapable of investigating their own actions. SPD is the main reason I become involved into social justice work after SPD violated the constitutional rights to attack a peaceful BLM protest I attended. Thank you, SPD, for breaking my American dream of freedom and liberty by knowing this are just propaganda. After reading the CLDC lawsuit documents of SPD officers using racist language towards BIPOC citizens, can you imagine how SPD would handle a hate crime report? My stomach was twitching and I cannot, can, I cannot stop my tears when I was reading OIR report how SPD used deadly force to kill Stacey Kenny, a transgender with mental health struggle. How would you expect SPD to respond to a mental health crisis and how to respond to a person from LGBT community? SPD sexual harassment would torch internal female officer and continuously, continuously humiliating their, her after she was fired. How would you expect SPD would respond to the mass violence and sexual assault of victims? SPD is so corrupted and toxic. They have zero cultural competence and no ability to provide safety for our community. Stop saying majority officers are great people. No snowflake in a launcher is innocent. The worst part is this crop system has been running in this community for many, many years. How many other harms? We don't know. Have Springfield City Council tried to hold SPD accountable or continue looking for excuses? Springfield needs a real community to make the marginalized population feel safe. Where women, where women and the BIPOC community and LGBTQ support resource in Springfield. Define SPD and reallocate funds to build social services and invest a resource for the BIPOC community. Every single city council here has a chance to correct mistakes from the past and make a change for the future. You can do this. Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Holly Shaper, followed by SJ Lore. Holly, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Great. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Holly Shaper. I live in Ward Two. So there were four front page articles in the Register Guard in the last 10 days around problems within SPD. In the last two years, the city has settled the largest police claim in Oregon history with the Kenny family, settled with Lieutenant McKee and Officer Stone to leave the department, settled with the Beecham and Chaplin families for excessive use of force, and is facing one lawsuit and three tort claim notices so far this year. I'm glad to see that the city is at last taking the first tangible step toward police accountability with plans to seriously review and consider the recommendations within the Brazil report. And I really look forward to hearing the discussion between council and the author of the OIR report in two weeks about his recommendations based on the Kenny case. In addition to all the front page news, I find it concerning to think about the fact that each internal misstep is causing the need for independent investigations that cost the city around $35,000 each. Is this money coming directly from the SPD budget? Counselor Pictionary expressed concern in February over spending around $80,000 to host a special election to ensure that Springfield voters are choosing our leadership due to fears of loss of staffing. It would seem to me that we are already in excess of the cost of a special election through the expense of these independent investigations. How is this going to be addressed? Regarding the Brazil report, I would like to hear council specifically address the videotaping of the peaceful protest on June 6th and other dates by two SPD detectives. This is concerning because according to the report, no pro-police protests were videotaped, only BLM protests. Yet Chief Lewis read aloud an Oregon state statute at a SPAC meeting on February 4th. This statute states that "The department shall not collect or maintain information about the political, religious, or social views, associations, or activities of any individual group, association, organization, corporation, business, or partnership, unless such information directly relates to an investigation of criminal activities and there are reasonable grounds to suspect the subject of the information is or may be involved in criminal conduct." In accordance with this Oregon state statute, what is being done to ensure that this practice of recording the actions of social justice organizations ceases? And finally, what is being done to protect city staff specifically within the police department from sexual harassment? We lost an entire SPD command staff in 2013 due to inappropriate relationships. This was followed up by a lawsuit from former staff alleging stalking and sexual harassment and by multiple other sexual misconduct lawsuits. Why were changes not instituted at that time in order to prevent what is happening currently? Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is SJ Lore, followed by Thomas Lawrence. And SJ, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello, I am in Ward Four. Can everyone hear me?
We can. We can.
Perfect. I would like to share a quote today from Chief Ardenato of the Minneapolis Police Department. Quote, "We may be the first and last time they, as in the public, have an interaction with a police officer. So we have to make it count. It matters." End quote. This should be the mentality of all Springfield Police Department. Has the city considered starting fresh with a new police department entirely? Sergeants set the attitude and expectation for the boots on the ground, so to speak, of the officers interacting with the community. There's absolutely a trickle down effect of negligence and corruption proven by the plethora of lawsuits over the last few years. Springfield has made corruption a priority, unfortunately, which it should be making community input a priority. It is absolutely inexcusable that you guys do not allow public dialogue via the chat and Zoom. Just making that clear that it's inexcusable. The city should not be in charge of SPD's social media either, as it seems to me that the public, you know, the city and the police department should be separate and it's a huge problem, in my opinion. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Lawrence, and it appears Thomas is our last speaker with a hand raised. And Thomas, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
All right, awesome. Thank you. I too would like to talk a little bit about the Brazil report. And I mean, I don't even know where to go with it because there's so many things. But the main one that I want to get to is that there were 30, what, 38 recommendations made? But ultimately, the report said, you know, eh, they're doing okay. No major violation. Maybe that's standard for every police department. I guess that wouldn't surprise me too much, but one specific that I do want to address that I haven't heard enough about is his report that there was no collusion with other people, but there was also a direct quote that I will read real quick. I'll shorten it a little bit, but it was discovered that radio channel SPD two had failed to record any radio traffic from March 24th through July 30th, 2020. This failure did not allow this reviewer to listen to radio traffic, including directions from commanders, information provided by officers, and the extent officers and dispatchers add to or reduce the chaos of the incident. So how do you know there's no collusion when we don't have any record of the audio? It should be obvious, but that timeline covers the entirety of every BLM protest that was done in Springfield. But what I really want to get to and other people have touched on is the extent of putting Lewis on suspension isn't going to fix the problem. I want to know what happens with the audio for July 31st. Is it working again? Does that mean someone realized it was broken on July 31st and fixed it? And nobody reported it because we're just now finding out about it here in April or March or whenever he concluded his report? Who wasn't doing their job during that entire time? Was it recorded and then deleted? I mean, there's just so many questions to it that it throws the entire report out of the window. How can you say that there was no collusion when you don't even have the records? Where is that report at? Where's the investigation into the investigation? Can we do that now? Because I don't even see the value of a report that is so contradictory. 38 recommendations, but ultimately, eh, no major issues. We'll just kind of fix it as we go. No collusion, but also I didn't get to view any records. This report has absolutely no value to us. And since then, obviously, we've had a couple more lawsuits. You know, you know, the rest of the usual. We need sweeping change. We need to put money into other programs that can help us instead because at this rate, the Springfield Police Department is going to because at this rate, the Springfield Police Department is going to defund itself through their lawsuits. Thanks. I yield my time.
Mayor, it does appear we have one additional speaker. Lauren Williams. And Lauren, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren Williams. I live in Ward Two. I wanted to start by thanking Counselor Pictionary. I was listening to this SPAC meeting, and I really appreciated your questions and your participation. It was really heartening to see people asking some of the harder questions. And it occurred to me that maybe council hasn't hasn't read or doesn't have access to or hasn't collected whatever it may be, the 11 lawsuits that I'm aware of that are public with SPD. I wanted to offer emailing you each the 11 public lawsuits that I'm aware of. They kind of establish that these problems aren't new, that they don't originate with chief Louis, and that it's pretty vast within the police department. I think it's really critical information that you all have to combat these issues moving forward. And I would love to make sure that we're all on the same page, that this is not an issue just with Chief Louis. It's a pretty messed up culture that we really need to address. That's it. I yield my time. Thanks so much.
Mayor, it appears that those are our speakers.
Okay. Thank you very much for everybody that spoke. Mary Bridgett or Nancy, could you, before I let any counselor respond, could you provide us maybe a little bit of guidance since there's issues about lawsuits involved, personnel decisions involved, just about how to construct our comments? That would be really helpful.
I'm happy to chime in first, and then if Nancy has other information, just a reminder that the city has a lawsuit, we're calling it the Black Unity Lawsuit. It's in very early days. It has to do with the demonstration at the end of July. And the items in the Brazil report, I would just caution the council about making comments about that since we're involved in litigation and it is so early on. Also, as to Chief Lewis being on leave, public employees are afforded due process rights. That's an opportunity to a fair hearing and to be heard. And I just caution the council that that's an administrative matter under the city manager's purview. And that, again, it wouldn't be appropriate to make a lot of comments about that this evening in the city council meeting.
This is Nancy. I think Mary Bridgett handled that comment well. I would just encourage council, just, I know that you are all keenly interested in making our city the best that it can be, and I appreciate that. I know you, this is difficult to kind of edit your comments, but things that are personnel-related, I treat them all the same. And so, you know, there's certain rights that public employees have regarding due process, as Mary Bridgett mentioned. And so, I do want to point out, though, that when an employee is placed on administrative leave, that is not indictment, an indictment of that employee. It is simply a method that we use in order to investigate a situation further. So it's not a commentary about that employee, nor is it a judgment about them. So I just wanted to be clear on that, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Did anybody have counsel response? Counselor Stare?
Thanks, Mayor Van Gordon. I'd like to thank everybody for their comments tonight. And I'd just like to say, in light of what the city attorney has said, that we are taking the findings of the Brazil report very seriously. And I would counsel the public to exercise patience as we go through the findings and as we consider the city's options going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Pictionary?
I, actually, I think Leonard was very eloquent how he put that, and it was very similar to what I was going to say or actually I'm going to say. I think I read the reports very thoroughly, front to back, a couple times. I look at those reports as a, as a great way to dive into and make some changes wherever they are. And it doesn't mean that the changes, everybody agrees with us. Obviously, as we heard from the public, there's going to be some differences. But the part that's exciting to me is that, you know, we have it all before us and that we have something that's in front of us that we can look at and address one by one. And I want to keep an open mind, one by one, and look for areas that need to be in or make changes, whatever. It's just the, to have that and to have a tool in front of us to make those types of things, changes occur, to me is exciting. And I think people should look at this, whether they agree with it in whole or not, should look at this as, you know, it's definitely a step forward. And, you know, we cannot change the past, but we can definitely, I know it sounds cliche, but we can certainly learn from it and make right decisions based on the past. So I look forward to that, and I appreciate the comments from you, Lauren. That was kind of you. And I know my heart's in the right place, and I am excited about delving into this further. So hopefully, it didn't hurt anything legally, but there I am. That's where I'm at.
Counselor Rodley?
Thank you. I appreciate Counselor Stare just reminding us all that this takes time and the patience that it takes, which can be really frustrating. I absolutely understand that as someone who works within and without systems. So I understand that. And I also echo the thanks for people who are reading these reports along with us and engaging in this process because we are a community. And as I've said before, we are co-creating this together. So thank you for coming. And I also want to hold a little piece to thank Raylene Lindeman for coming and reminding us of all of the fabulous things that the library does. And I am excited about the printing, and I am excited about the possibility of reopening. And just want to just extend my appreciation for the curbside pickup and all of the new website and all of the things that the library has done during the COVIDian times to make sure that people have as much access as possible. So thank you for that.
Counselor Pitts?
Good evening, y'all. First of all, I want to thank everybody for attending this, but then also the people who are brave enough to do public comment. I know that some of the issues are somewhat controversial and kind of hard to talk about, and some of you bear your own soul, and that's very appreciated, at least, you know, by me. One thing I can say is that every day I challenge myself to do self-reflection and to think about ways to bridge the gap. And when I mean bridge the gap, I think about how can we, as Springfield citizens, get to know one another? How can we create a culture that people would want to come here, but then also want to stay here? How do we create a culture to where, when something volatile happens, we can comfortably say, "That rarely ever happens here. We're sorry. We're going to fix it." And I think that's hard, but the truth of the matter is, we don't know each other. We might pass each other. We might run, you know, run in the same circles, but not really know each other. And so this is a challenge to all of us, is to step outside your comfort zone, get to know somebody new, get to know somebody who doesn't look like you, think like you, act like you. Now granted, you know, this might sound very kumbaya-ish or we are the world, but that's not the case. But, you know, somebody mentioned changing the culture, and the truth of the matter is, we can read as many books as we want to. We can look at news. We can embrace various elements of media, but there's always multiple sides of multiple stories. And sometimes you got to be able to go to the source and get to know people. And I think that we need to start figuring out a way to come together, move forward as a community. I know I'm new to this, probably newer to Springfield than a lot of you. And so, excuse me if this comes off as very, I don't know, naive, but that's just the way I think, you know. I try to see the good in people. I really want us to be able to collaborate and get to know one another and potentially figure out ways to make this city greater.
All right, thank you. And the only thing I would just add, I think everybody's had some really wise comments about just the pacing of this is going to take. It's going to take time. And, you know, the material, I can vouch for everybody on the council that the material that people are asking and saying, "Have you read it? Have you understood it? Have you digested?" Yes, we've read it. We understand it. We digested it. We digested it. There's a lot of good recommendations and a lot of roadmaps from policy changes that we need to make that are in those and that in those reports. And like Counselor Pictionary said, I think we kind of have a roadmap now that we can begin to work with a little bit of time. So I would just caution a little bit of patience that, you know, we're working through this. We're going to get through it, and we'll get to the other side. Counselor Mo?
I want to, well, since October, I've been really pushing for getting into this police issue. And so many times, I think the city manager's avoiding my calls, but nicely. Anyway, we're having to wait, and I hate it because I don't like that. But I want everybody to know, we're going to do it, and we'll make Springfield proud of us. I promise you.
All right. Next item, please.
The next item is a resolution, resolution number one, a resolution initiating vacation of an unimproved portion of public right-of-way abutting private property at 5409 Ivy Street. Sorry, resolution number two, a resolution initiating vacation of an unimproved portion of public right-of-way abutting private property at 5409 Ivy Street, assessor's map 18-02-04-00, tax lot 300. And Melissa Corrino is here again for the staff report.
Thanks, Neil. Hi again, counselors and mayor. So again, tonight, the city council is requested to consider a resolution to initiate vacation of a portion of unimproved city-owned public right-of-way located along the northern side of Ivy Street, abutting private property at 5409 Ivy Street. The site marked in yellow is 5409 Ivy Street. Just to provide more context, here's a, hold on, a larger map of the city of Springfield, just kind of a drawn-back view. And the site that we're discussing is marked with a red star. It's west of Bob's Drive Parkway and south of Main Street. You can see it here as well. Bob's Drive on the west, I'm sorry, the east side, and then the property in the top left corner. Because the previous property owner of 5409 Ivy Street wanted to retain the rectangular shape of the property, when the Hayden Homes Pinehurst Phase One plat was being recorded, the wedge-shaped portion of right-of-way was dedicated to the city in 2015. The vacation is requested by the new property owner of 5409 Ivy Street in order to facilitate construction of a garage or carport that meets the minimum 18-foot Springfield Development Code setback requirements. So if you could see here, if we counted the setback from the yellow line of 18 feet, it doesn't leave much room for the garage or the carport. The city is requested to initiate this resolution to vacate because of the challenges and limitations involved in obtaining consent from all affected property owners during the COVID pandemic. However, the initial applicant, the new property owner of 5409 Ivy Street, did provide written consents from the adjacent property owners, so the one to the southwest and then one to the northeast. Again, here's the Springfield Development Code section 3.2-215 for the setback requirements of 18 feet. If this vacation is approved and the portion of subject right-of-way is transferred to private property, the property owner of 5409 Ivy Street must record and execute a public utility easement along Ivy Street frontage to be consistent and uniform with the rest of the right-of-way. One thing to note, there are no direct financial impacts associated with the initiation of this vacation process by city council resolution. If this vacation is initiated by city council tonight, a public hearing will be scheduled for Monday, May 3rd. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Counselor Pictionary?
Just a quick one. Was the, did we provide any consideration for that property that was given to us?
Do you mean, were we trying to make that private property back then?
No. Being provided consideration means a monetary payment.
Oh, right. No. So there was not any consideration of finances at that time. The right-of-way that we're trying to vacate is actually, the maintenance of that is required by the property owner of 5409 Ivy Street. So, maintenance is done.
So then, when the previous owner that wanted the rectangular shape, when they gave up that slice, that pie slice there, and the city assumed that or gave that through or received that through deed, is that correct?
Dedication.
Dedication. So then, the city didn't pay that property owner for any part of that dedication, correct?
No. There was no payment.
And so, okay, and so the property owner to the, mostly to the south, a little bit west, they have no issue with that at all?
No. They had written a, I think it's in the application, they had consented for that vacation.
I was briefly scanning this and looking for that. So, okay, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, no problem.
Counselor Stare?
So, just so that I can get it clear in my mind, if the council were to take no action here, then the property owner of 5409 would not be in compliance with the setback regulations? And then what would happen?
I think what would happen at this point, the applicant would have to get all the affected property owners' written consent and take the time, even during this pandemic or after the pandemic, to actually move that vacation through.
Is there any of the adjacent property owners that have not given their consent?
No, the two adjacent property owners did give consent. The affected property owners did include maybe, I would say, 20 other properties. And the applicant, the property owner of 5409 Ivy Street, has had a very difficult time reaching out to the title company as well as those adjacent or those affected property owners.
Okay, so absent their consent, the consent of these other 20-some property owners, then that would make it impossible for them to maintain the, or comply with the setback regulations. Is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Rodley?
It sounded like you said that the property owner has been maintaining that all along. Is that what you said?
That is correct.
That they've been responsible for maintaining that part of the property as if?
Yes, as if it was theirs already.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Anybody else? Can, then I'm ready for a motion if people are ready.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number two, a resolution initiating vacation of an unimproved portion of public right-of-way abutting private property at 5409 Ivy Street, assessor's map 18-02-04-00, tax lot 300.
Second. It's been moved in second. Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Pitts?
Hey.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Stare?
Hi.
And Counselor Pictionary?
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero with one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is any business from the city council.
Are there any announcements from the city council? No, quite a bunch. I do have an announcement. Desserts for dinner is coming up. Desserts for dinner two or three, depending on how you count it. Leonard's already interested. He's like desserts. Yes, sir. Are you just ordering one? All right, so it's Saturday, April 24th. You can order off the Catholic Community Services website. So the money goes to support Oasis Now, which is the, which is the family day center in town for unhoused families and kids. And we have eight bakers. So it's pick up from, it's pick up from Catholic Community Services, and you take the Uh, and we have eight bakers. So it's pick up from, gee, it's pick up from Catholic Community Services and you take the box of delicious goodies home and you enjoy them at your own home. So please check it out because there's still some boxes available. Anything else? All right. I was going to tell you, Corey, Busy Bee may be in there. I know they're your favorite. All right, next item, please.
Next item is business from the city manager. Uh, item number one, twenty twenty-one Springfield Enterprise Zone re-designation. And Courtney Griesel is here for the staff report.
Good evening. Um, appreciate you all have had a long evening, so I will try to keep this, uh, light. Slightly detailed, but quick. I'm going to share my screen. So this evening, we are here to talk about re-designation of our enterprise zone. So it seemed like a great place to start would be with a discussion about what our enterprise zone actually is. And then go over some overviews of the exciting things that have happened with companies within the zone and what it means to re-designate it. So from the standpoint of what the zone actually is, it is a state-defined program. It allows us to draw a boundary around certain areas of the community. And within that boundary, we then have the ability to administer a tax abatement program. So it's a program that if a company makes a new investment for a short term, for a short window of time, we can abate some portions of the taxes that would be, uh, levied on those new investments. So it's interesting because we say it is a state program, but the, the water is carried at the local level. Um, and it is on property taxes as well. So, um, we're grateful that the state authorities is us to use it. Uh, but we do administer it. Um, so Springfield has the current standard enterprise zone. Uh, it is a rural zone. And so we'll talk about what that boundary is. Uh, really the goal of the program is, uh, that it is about incenting expansion of an existing business. A business that's creating a good or service here and selling it primarily outside of our region. Our goal is, uh, that these companies invest in new equipment, they modernize, they expand, they add jobs, and they make more of those widgets to be sold around the US or globe and bring more, um, of those dollars back into our economy. And our hope is that they're interested in making the investment. For sure, they make it here and they don't make it in a different state. Uh, but that maybe they go a little bigger, uh, than they would have but for this tax abatement as well. And, uh, and really our goal is also in these three to five-year windows that we're incenting the most precarious moment of their expansion. The moment when they're really trying to stabilize the business plan, get workforce trained up. Um, and that it comes off of that exemption for the many years after, uh, when the company is thriving and growing and, and and using that new equipment. So as we kind of mentioned, it is traded sector focused, making something here, selling it elsewhere. Um, I'll note that we, we really cannot, um, recruit a company from somewhere else in Oregon. If it's recruitment, it's got to be new to our region. Uh, they can't be curtailing jobs elsewhere. But we do a lot of focus on expansion. A lot of our existing companies use this tool. Uh, the other, uh, element is that if they're going to request, um, an abatement that, a tax exemption that's longer than three years, if they're going to request the five-year exemption, not only do they have to increase jobs on the site, but those jobs need to average, uh, one and a half times the current county, uh, compensation packet. So that means that these, these companies, employees are making about sixty-eight thousand annually. So I want to talk a little bit about where we've been and we've, I've focused on the last fifteen years, partly because the last fifteen years are the years that the program has been most consistent. Uh, and it does actually do quite a deep look back for Springfield. Uh, in total, we've, uh, had about nineteen, uh, enterprise zone projects. Uh, nine of them are, are current, they're occurring right now. Uh, so we're really busy right now. It's a positive thing, even through COVID, those, those current companies have maintained pace and they've maintained their employment. They have continued, we've kind of always been both retention and expansion and recruitment. But, um, in the recent years, we've made a very concerted effort to focus on expansion projects, companies who are already here and we want to see them grow here. Um, so the majority of our companies are currently expansion projects. So just kind of a list of the companies, some you know, uh, some you may not have heard of, but are doing really cool things, just quietly. And then, uh, in the packet, we included kind of a look at the financial impacts of these companies. So we talk about nineteen companies, but then when we say really those nineteen companies are responsible for over three thousand jobs every year, starts to feel a little bit, um, even more exciting. And when we talk about how much they're really investing, I mean, we're investing, these are almost four hundred million dollars in investments in our community that become taxable. Um, and that makes a really big difference. And so if you think about some of the significant companies like Swanson's, uh, you know, but for this tool and partnerships, they, it didn't pencil to rebuild here. Um, International Paper. Um, a lot of those companies that we see are, um, part of their choice to choose us in the beginning was based on this, this incentive. Although their choice to stay is because Springfield's pretty amazing. So I'm not biased or anything. But we win projects, so we must be. So what's interesting about this re-designation is, uh, in the past, we, we have been what's considered a rural zone, which has always been funny to me. And I just try and breeze over that with people because it doesn't make sense to them. We're not very rural. But as of recent years, our metropolitan statistical area, our MSA has been re-designated and now includes the name Springfield in it. So we are the Eugene Springfield MSA, or as I refer to it, the Springfield Eugene MSA. Uh, that means that we do need to transition our zone slightly. Uh, the zone will expire at the end of June. We need to read, we need to apply to re-designate it by that time. And we need to bring down the size of the zone. We need to shrink some of the geographic distances between certain pockets. Um, and we need to ensure that all parts are within our urban growth boundary. So we've done a little bit of the, uh, creative mapping to show what that might look like. And so we want to show you this new boundary that we're proposing, should you desire to, um, ask us to reapply for designation. Everywhere that you see the, um, sort of hashed marks are, are historic. They were the, the current enterprise zone that is in existence through the end of June. Uh, because we do have to shrink from fifteen square miles down, we have to drop some of that. But we've also done some great work to expand our urban growth boundary. So we want to acknowledge those places. So where you see the purple is where we are proposing the new boundary to exist. Uh, so this means, uh, we have dropped the county's Goshen area. This is not in our urban growth boundary and is required by the uh, new guidelines that it no longer be in ours. Um, we are expanding to include southern portions of where the urban growth boundary was bumped out in recent years as well as northern portions up in Gateway. Um, additionally, we really focused in closely to identify pockets of areas that are clearly neighborhoods. And where there is some commercial, it is community commercial, uh, relatively established and focused on serving those residential areas. So by dropping those, it's allowed us to come in under the twelve square miles where, where it just about eleven. Um, the other thing we've done is removed some areas. Um, so like up here in the north, this is a residential neighborhood. Uh, this is Markola Meadows. So we are removing that portion. And then you see this large tract of land, which is actually kind of up on the hill and is a public facility. It's a water facility. So we wouldn't really want to incent that to redevelop.
Leonard, do you have questions? I can't tell if you're scrolling or.
Um, no, I, I don't at this point. I was just trying to expand my screen to look at the map a little bit more thoroughly. Thanks.
Yeah.
Courtney, I had a question about the map. And in mid Springfield, where's the, is the line running on Main Street or is it running sort of south?
It's running, yeah, it's running south. So actually this hard line between the purple and the yellow, assuming everyone is not colorblind, uh, the hash and the nonhash, that is Main Street.
So would the line include sort of the scent, like the mid, the, the southern commercial properties on Main Street there? Or is it like actually in the middle of the road?
In that case, it is running down the center of the loan, the road. So this is kind of a historic holdover. Um, so it currently runs down the middle line or, or, uh, on the boundary of the right-of-way. Um, on the south side, it's primarily community commercial uses. Uh, we could take a look at, uh, if there's some opportunity sites in there and work with survey to include them, if it made some sense.
I, I would be open to that. That was the, that was one of two places where I was like, I just can't tell from this map about like, you know, you know, if there's some opportunity sites. And then on the furthest kind of northeast corner where the Highland property would be, right? That little, when you come into High Banks there, would that little sort of commercial set of properties be in or out?
Uh, still in. So it is this pocket. Yeah, that's one I, I, I look closely. I'm sending people his way all the time. Begging him to build more. So that remains in there. Um, it actually doesn't change anything except that it sort of wraps around, uh, and then removes this residential, um, kind of this neighborhood and core right in here. But let us take a look at some of these parcels in here. And, um, see about maybe bumping south, even just a tax lot south of Main Street.
Anybody else have questions? Uh, Counselor Mo?
On my Glenwood thing again. I'm glad to see you expand the boundary to the urban growth boundary in Glenwood. There's lots of opportunity there. And this, this will help. Thanks.
Yeah, agree. You know, Glenwood had some pockets in it, uh, before. And so areas that had been unincorporated were still in the pockets. It felt good to just wrap in there.
Pish.
So it seems that, um, because we need to get it under twelve and we're already under, slightly under eleven. I like the idea of going bumping that south border or the north border of Main Street to the south side. Because even if it's just straight across as opposed to a jagged edge, um, that will open that up for any of those properties through there to maybe look at, see what kind of options they have. Uh, maybe they want to make, change things up and that'll take that taxic, uh, incentive to be able to do that. And I don't, I wouldn't want to discourage changing things up. And I would really like to see some, some good, uh, some, some healthy changes along Main Street. And it may even help improve the safety corridor if those changes are made. So if we got the ability to change it, I, I, I would move that south just a little bit.
Okay.
Counselor Stare?
Um, thanks. Courtney, where is the eastbound, um, border of the Main Street, um, development that we're, or addition that we're contemplating?
I am not.
In, in other words, how, how far does the Main Street corridor extend, um, in that yellow area that we're thinking about adding?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, for the enterprise zone, uh, I think what we're talking about is dropping it south of, this is, uh, I think at about forty, I'd have to look to be honest, uh, maybe around forty-eighth. Um, so we would drop it south at that point. We could take a look at what's occurring up in this area, but it is pretty heavily even residential fronting this with apartments. And we're always really sensitive and multifamily, that, that can be, um, vulnerable locations to this change. We we want to be sensitive to that, but we can look at it.
Well, I, I, the, the reason I'm asking is that the, uh, the Main Street corridor from forty-second to about fifty-fourth where Thurston begins is pretty depressed right now. I mean, it's not, uh, there, there's not a lot going on right now. And there's some ban, my, my heart breaks for some of the family businesses that are owned in that corridor.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take a look at a way to, um, to kind of hug both sides of Main Street a little better.
Thank you.
So the, the next steps on it for us, it's kind of a two-phase process. We need to make a, a application to the state by June thirtieth. Application to the state means a couple of things. Uh, we need to do some of the data and findings, which I've included in your packet and that part is already done. Uh, we need to engage with our local, uh, taxing districts and partners. Uh, we have a formal process to do that, but we work really closely with them. So we'll also outreach personally. Uh, and then we need to come back in and have a public meeting to adopt a resolution formally, a public hearing. And that then, uh, points to that application. It satisfies the application to the state. Uh, the state recently removed rules in which they limited the number of zones that could exist. So, uh, I do not believe we're in a threat of not being approved as long, so long as we do things effectively. And we do tend to be one of the leaders in the state for, um, administration of the program. So I think we're in good standing there. After that, assuming those things go forward, you have to re-designate me as your zone manager. You could choose someone else, but we should talk about that. Um, and then we have to make notice to the county assessor as well and the Department of Revenue. We then have about six to nine months where we get to work through sort of, um, a finalization of the boundary. So we do have time to do this where we look at parcels on both sides. I always will say we should leave ourselves a little bit of a buffer because we never know when a new site or something might, uh, make sense for another zone amendment. Um, and then we have the ability to explore, move now that we're in an urban zone, putting any additional conditions that we might want on an application process for a business. And we can really talk about the pros and cons or the impacts of those new conditions. Um, so we would do those in the second half of this calendar year. So that's, um, all my fun for this late in the evening. We're still a little bit of time left in that Gonzaga game.
Counselor Mo?
I have a curious question. In the, uh, in the Thurston area where you're pulling out one point zero two square miles, that little piece that sticks out, very narrow peak piece?
Yeah.
What is that? What was that?
Yeah, it was part of an odd tax lot and right-of-way, uh, that, a kind of remnant. We had a couple others and some other odd locations that we noted when we were going through it.
It was just a curious thing. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, really curious thing.
I have a question. Um, when, when, when these organizations, these companies apply to try to build, i- is, is it possible for the city to implement some kind of control on like any type of environmental pollution to where they have to have a certain code and have to adhere to certain rules to reduce emissions, to uh, avoid pollution. But then also I think about, uh, companies with histories of discriminatory practices. I mean, is there any way to uh, make sure that they, you know, follow the rules that, you know, the, the six points that we have on our website, uh, to where they will enhance Springfield versus make it go the opposite direction than what we want it to.
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. And what's exciting about what's occurring for us now is this transition from rural to urban actually gives us more authority, uh, to implement, um, any additions, additional conditions like that, specific to, you know, hiring or some of those practices. It's related to environmental or land use or permitting practices, you know? What I'm always very proud about is economic development professional in Oregon is we really do set the bar nationally. And so, uh, our agreements and their really existence operating in Oregon does require that they adhere to pretty significant environmental permitting. Uh, they do pay the cost for those permitting. And then we have strong partnerships with entities like Development, uh, DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, but also Lane Regional Air Pollution um, and our own Metro Water, uh, Metro Waste Water Management Commission. So those things are built in, uh, to them being in our urban, our urban area. But I think there's some areas that we get to. But I think there's some areas that we get to now do a little more work since we're moving to urban.
All right, any other questions? I think you just needed to go over the material, right Courtney? You didn't need us to do anything?
No, just need to go over it, but I do need you to agree, just head nods that you're okay with us starting the process formally and we'll start to engage taxing entities and. Do another run at a boundary and off to the races.
Perfect, really appreciate it. Thank you, Courtney.
Yep.
Next item, you?
Next item is any other business from the city manager.
Evening, counsel. I don't have any formal business for you, just a quick comment. Although I appreciate Councilor Mo's sense of humor, which is often quite dry. We are in a public meeting tonight, so I just want to confirm from the record that I would never ever dodge a counselor's phone call, so that's all I have.
I was joking and I.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Better attention, didn't it?
Next item is business from the city attorney.
No additional business from the city attorney, thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Our meeting's adjourned. Take care.